Good evening, everyone. Tab A. Ms. Vicki? I'm sorry.
I saw the Villarican that they're going to vote on the city manager today. I'd like to register my disappointment with the city council because there were several prominent citizens that expressed an interest in being involved in the selection of the new city manager. That could have taken place simply as a Q and A, just like the League of Women Voters did for candidates for the last election here. Just where pre-submitted questions could have been made and they could have answered those questions, you know, and allowed citizens to make up their minds and inform their city council members what they thought. But it doesn't appear that much effort was made in that regard.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else?
Hey. I live at 541 North Avenue and we just would like to discuss the speeding on that road. It's been going on for a long time and we've made comments on Facebook and we had somebody that was speeding and basically didn't have enough time to stop at the stop sign because they were going so fast and they ran into my yard. And my granddaughter was out there playing, so it's just a really bad problem on that road, like constantly. I don't know about speed bumps. And I think a few months ago, they put a thing that'll flash the speed limit. They put that up, but I'm not sure really that helped. People just drive by it. So, I didn't, you know, it's a huge problem on that road. There's a lot of kids out there and just my concern. So, is that all I do?
Your name?
Angela Rowell. Alright, thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. And I'd like to ask staff, would you leave your name and some contact information with us, ma'am? Before you leave, just leave your, some contact information. Someone from staff will be getting back with you, in touch with you. But Chief, I know we did have that sign out there, so can you prepare some information for the council? Showing what the speed limits were, where the thresholds were and all that, like you normally do?
We do have a speed study on that road.
Any other public comments? Okay. If not, we will close that portion of the meeting and now we will go on to Tab A, which is community development. Ms. Coleman?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This first item up, this will be a presentation by the Georgia Department of Transportation regarding the North Loop roundabout designs. This meeting is essentially their opportunity to begin to present to you prior to their public information open house, which will take place on Thursday, July 20th. They just want to ensure that you certainly understand and can begin to anticipate any questions and just provide any additional information. I'm going to, I'm not sure which one of the consultants or the representatives will begin to speak first, but I'll certainly turn it over. Turn the presentation over.
Alright. Robert Renwick with Keck and Wood. And we have Jill Brown, Mark Linters, Nebu Nagash, and Grant Waldrop with us as well as part of the team working on these roundabouts. And we really just don't have a formal presentation or anything, but really just wanted to have the opportunity to get in front of the elected officials, like Vicki said, ahead of next month's public meeting, so that you all could be educated on what we're proposing here, why we're proposing it, and have an opportunity to ask any specific questions about the layouts and the operation and the overall plan for this. So as you all are probably aware, we've got the North Loop bypass project that we've been working on for some time. And we've got roundabouts proposed at the intersection of State Route 61 and the bypass, along with Industrial Boulevard, Rockmart Road, State Route 101 and the bypass. We've got a couple of videos for y'all to take a look at that kind of illustrate the operation of these roundabouts. And then we also have these scale models of the roundabout scale to these toy cars that we can, you know, just kind of see how they operate. Mark has kind of some general information on roundabouts that he'd like to share about why we're doing this and the benefits for that.
Well, first of all, yesterday was the Governor's Safety Conference and the Commissioner closed out the meeting with his presentation in support of staff and task forces collecting support for the statewide safety programs, Strategic Highway Safety Plan. My name is Mark Linters. I'm with Auerston and part of the project team. One of the things that the Commissioner said in his comments afterwards was he would like to see a stronger public engagement for innovative intersections. And it was rather casual comment, but it's echoed tonight because that's the reason we're here. Is because we don't think a project like this should be advanced without your support. And that's my personal opinion because I've been doing roundabouts near on 20 years. And I've always found that when we work with local agencies, you know, I might be representing a department or a county, that we want to get your support. We want you to understand this. And if you don't, this is the time to kick the tires. This is the time to put us to the test and make sure you understand the problem and why we think a roundabout is the right solution. So that, we want to kind of do an informal Q and A and sort of get some discussion going. And with these props and facilitating things, we've got some additional visuals to show you and to kind of answer your questions and just to increase your comfort level. Roundabouts are being used statewide now. There's a fairly large program of safety countermeasure projects involving roundabouts. Among other things, median U-turn R-cuts they're referred to for expressway-type crossings and where there's safety issues, roundabouts are pretty high on the department's list of countermeasures. So where you have a new intersection, it's also important to consider a roundabout. So when different options were looked at, stop control, traffic signals, roundabout. The roundabout tends to give you better efficiency, but it is certain to give you better safety than the alternatives, and the alternatives being traffic signals. And the principal reason is the roundabout's going to slow movements from all directions so that even where vehicles do cross paths, the closing speed of those crossing paths is much slower than if it's, someone fails the red and runs the red. We all know people who have been in collisions or wrecks that involve high speed and you may be related to someone that's been involved in that. And roundabouts are mitigating, almost eliminating, certainly eliminating many of the fatal crashes that can occur at intersections like these. So the department's very supportive and recognizing they're getting national support, federal highways helps fund the safety-funded projects in the state. So there's quite a bit of momentum in this direction. But again, you have to be comfortable with this. And one of the main reasons is your constituents are going to drive these roundabouts. And so, you know, as you can see, there's information, you have a brochure that the department has put together for public meetings like this. And the intent being it's going to be on your turf and the department can drop a roundabout here on a state road, but your people are going to drive it. And so we need you to be comfortable with that.
I do have a couple of questions. And we just, for the public out there, we attended GMA, Georgia Municipal Association Conference in Savannah this past weekend. And one of the classes that some of us took, one of them was a bike-friendly community class. And it occurred to me that we were beginning to kind of move at an accelerated pace to improve our intersections and, you know, the North Bypass has finally looked like it's going to start. And so I want to make sure, and this council wants to make sure, that we incorporate everything that we can to be a bike-friendly community. So with that in mind, you know, is it too late in the process, and I hope the answer's no, to incorporate bike lanes into the design of the roundabouts?
Certainly never too late to incorporate something like that. If that's something that the city is interested in developing on this new bypass, that's something we can discuss with the department and see what our options are there.
You know, certainly I'm one person, and if that's the council's desire, I would like to, like y'all to sound off and give me your opinions on it. But I know it's a lot easier to do it now than it wouldn't be to try to retrofit it into something, you know, later on down the road and say, "Gosh, I wish we'd have, you know, thought about that when these go into effect." I'm excited. Chris is here. Chris, they want to up you on your PowerPoint presentation, buddy. They got cars and little roads and everything. So my other question, and (laugh) my other question actually came from a constituent today, and that is, obviously, or maybe not obviously, but as far as timeframe for these being installed, since we won't have, or perhaps won't have, the North Bypass in place, would we still build a roundabout and just leave the portion that intersect where the fire truck is off? Is it still possible to make it a three-way?
So the roundabouts are proposed to be constructed along with the bypass.
Got you.
So.
Okay, so that's the answer to that. So it'll all be in conjunction?
Exactly. It'll all be one project.
I've got one option.
Um, whoops. Am I on? Yeah. My question, or maybe it's, yeah. I'm comfortable with roundabouts now. I've driven them, but I can remember coming upon them and going, "What the heck do I do with this?" So what do we do as far as public education? Because it moves so much smoother. You know, I go down through Whitesburg, there's few in Douglas County you go through when you're taking the backroads down to Coweta. What can we do? What do you do? How can we help the citizens be comfortable with how to figure the yield and that sort of thing?
Well, Mark can probably speak more on that topic, but that's part of the reason we're planning to engage the public next month at the meeting. We're going to have these same layouts and some videos and some more information to educate them on how to operate through these roundabouts.
I'm guessing there's some little videos we could send out on our Villarica happening? I could send out email to my ward and show people just how they function.
Absolutely.
They're probably all over YouTube, but I know you probably have something you'd recommend.
It's not just what's in the toolbox to help people learn how to drive them. It's a process. And it starts with meetings like this and moves through the PIOH and then towards construction and opening. And the department has a number of resources that can be provided. The key is the leverage doesn't happen because the department says, "Hey, it's on our website." If it's not owned and adopted locally, you know, it's very difficult for us to reach your constituents. So we'll put things in your hands in a timely fashion so that as things come to opening, you know, typically meetings with the police, fire, EMS, you know, or information through emails, and we'll provide that ahead of time. So when the ribbon gets cut, everyone here knows how to drive them. You have talking points information to pass on to others. When your phone rings, you'll have answers for those questions, too. You won't be left in a vacuum. That hasn't always been the case, but we, you know, I worked nationally on this. In fact, I moved down here from Wisconsin a few months ago after about seven years of back-and-forth commuting. And the department has a commitment to that outreach, as I mentioned, with the Commissioner's comment yesterday. And so we'll get everything in your hands in a timely fashion. But it is the process as much as it is, our toolbox is full of things, but if we don't time it right, it won't help you.
The best video going is the one that someone did with a drone over a intersection, I believe it was Gwinnett County. And it shows at rush hour, all the traffic going through on a roundabout. And it just works. I mean, people just move. And, you know, that's one thing that was very important to the council when we looked at this is, you know, if you look at it, like you said to start with, with a stop sign or traffic light, someone's always stopped, one way. And with this, you know, everybody's flowing, playing happy together and hopefully, and moving through the intersection. So I thought, I'm excited about it.
We've got some pieces of interest that really follow on your comments. If you want to move to the video, you know, the first one is the drone video and things are a little bit quiet. If you drag the little cursor up from the bottom left, just move it around about halfway, you'll see it'll, it's pretty quiet there. This is one in the state and it was opened last year and it's starting to get some traffic. Now you see that vehicle from the lower right probably came up at about 45 miles per hour. And so the speed reduction would get them down to about 20. The larger trucks, you'll see them start to come in. So the length of the splitter island or the median provides that visual clue. So that if you see the length of medians on the approaches are longer than you might think is necessary, it's because as a package, the intent is the geometry and the curves show the driver where to slow down. We give them visual clues. So in addition to lighting, in addition to signing and marking, you get these other physical features that are somewhat self-enforcing. It's sustainable safety. Traffic signals, they require enforcement. Yield is a bit of a problem for some drivers. They don't understand if that means merge or it means wait for a gap. So this is where the education will come in.
Is this actual video?
Yeah, this is, it's, you could fall asleep. This is paint-dry kind of stuff. It's, it's not like the one in Gwinnett you're referring to. If you slide the cursor ahead on the lower left, yeah, just drag it about two-thirds of the way through, just to the right. To the right. There you go. Keep going. Keep going. Yeah. There's, okay, let it go. So you see a truck. So this is a good test. We often do public meetings and a truck driver shows up and says, "My truck will never fit through that." And for a bypass road, it has to be able to accommodate that kind of traffic. So we, the roundabout in this video is actually slightly smaller than this circle. So if you can appreciate how much space is there. This is a scale drawing. The map with the trucks and cars is also scale drawing. And so that gives you a sense of how much space is available for the largest vehicles. They can even handle oversized overweight vehicles. And we make sure that there's extra areas for tracking. The pink area around the central island, and as you can see from the video, the pink area is for the largest trucks to over-track. If you jump out to the next video, I'll show you some of the bike pads. Bike pads? There you go. Now this isn't in-state, but I just liked this video so much, I thought I'd bring it with me because it's typical of the kind of things you'll see. These are not high-speed roadways. One might be a state route or county roads intersecting. But you'll notice the vulnerability of these users and just how traffic behaves. So there's a transport truck coming through. And she's adventurous, this gal's. They line up at the crosswalk and they do what cyclists should do, which is dismount and walk across. Often the kids just ride right through crosswalks, which is unsafe. So and then the car in the circle stops. So everything is low speed. The visibility between users is good and it's not like trying to cross it through fair. We didn't stage this. We just happened to have the camera there and they showed up.
That brings out your bike paths.
When you mention bicycle paths, we don't normally mark a trail or a lane through the roundabout. We typically mark it on the approach and then it can divert to the terrace or boulevard and circulate on the outside in a shared path. Now whether or not the department can go in that direction, you know, shared path or additional sidewalk would be required to accommodate now bicycles and pedestrians around the intersection. A lot of cyclists who are skilled, they'll just drive through the roundabout because the speeds are low enough that they're very comfortable. They actually take up a lane. They'll occupy a whole lane and travel through at the same speed as traffic. If you look at another video.
So you said you mark it on the?
We mark it on the approaches, but not in the circle.
Yeah.
From European experience, they found that when they marked the trail all the way around the circle, the cyclist gets cut off at exits. Because they're circulating around, as the car comes from behind them, they go across and exit and the car exits across their path. And the view angles are so poor that cyclists were getting killed in Europe doing it that way. So we, no one's been doing it for about 10 years. We mark the trail on the approach and then divert the trail to a shared use path. Yeah, go ahead. That one's fine. This one's also, oh yeah, this is Cedar Hill. So commercial uses near roundabouts, we find that access, the roundabout is fairly forgiving when it comes to commercial developments. In fact, there are some places where gas station franchisees will look for a corner with a roundabout because their access is made more forgiving. Speeds are lower, you don't get long queues on the approaches, and it makes it easier to enter and exit development. And even if we have to restrict access, they have the U-turn on the circle, which you can't make comfortably at most intersections. So it sets up very nicely for access. In fact, on this one, I don't think it's in the video, but there's a fire station on one of the approaches.
On this video, the white part, is that elevated from the roadbed?
It's about three, three to four inches above the travel.
It looks like when the semi went through, his wheels would.
He just kind of caught the edge of it. But in fact, there's, the reason it's oval is because oversized overweight vehicles will cross this roundabout and actually take up the whole space. A 175-foot concrete beam truck or, you know, a low boy with a tank on it or.
Yeah, the white parts, circle, one of the ones that we're showing on this paper and they're, they're not circles. They have a point on them.
Okay, this one has the, it has a two-lane entry going eastbound and from the bypass, the left-turning vehicle. The left-turning vehicle can actually spiral off to the outside lane and exit. So this is a, it's a setup for lane-to-lane use so that as this driver circulates, they end up, they end up in the outside lane when they exit on a single lane. Rather than provide a two-lane exit, which is more space and more speed, we rationalize the lane configuration, you know, just so that we have just enough space for the traffic. So this bump on the corner, you know, making a corner off the circle is purposeful. It gets us that tighter space, well, still having space for the truck. We want this driver essentially spiral off the circle. But it's a common design feature. We've been applying for about 10, 15 years now.
So show me, when you say, I'm going to keep hitting this bike lane thing. Show me, when you say it would be marked on the approach, you're talking about the approach for the bike lane?
Correct.
And you would mark it on the road with sharrows? Is that?
That can be done. I don't think the department has had to do that yet. But what we're going to see a diversion is if there are crosswalks planned, usually the diversion occurs just before the point of entry. So the cyclist will go, will divert to a shared use path that is surrounding the intersection.
I like that.
And then they can reconnect with the exit and there's a ramp in and a ramp off. So they can get on and off. For higher capacity roundabouts, it tends to be the default that we'll give the diversion for entry and exit. On small single lane roundabouts, you tend not to, speeds are low enough, drivers, as you saw from that one video, that's a single roundabout, speeds are low. This one has the two-lane entries, so the speeds are going to be a little bit higher. I mean, we're talking two to five miles per hour. Not the difference between 15 and 30. Just an increment higher.
I like the idea of the bike lane on the outside. I have seen some with the sharrows and, you know, putting a bicycle on a roundabout and, you know, traffic is not a good idea, in my opinion. So I like the idea personally of the bike lanes on the outside.
I've written them where you hang out on the outside or you take the whole lane, if it's moving slow enough. You know, I'll stay out. Obviously, you don't want to take your children on there. That's bikers like us doing that. If it's children, you got to do a crosswalk onto another path.
There's one more video that we haven't shown yet. Yeah, that one at the bottom. This one's again, more ground-level view, but you'll see the buses coming around and a truck will enter, there'll actually even be a cyclist. So you get the impression, I mean, it's super efficient. This is a rural intersection where there's a lot of traffic coming and going around the afternoon rush hour. And everybody gets, you know, gets their space and everyone takes their turn. And here comes the cyclist. Now he's riding on the outside, which we wouldn't recommend, but you can see he's actually going faster than the circulating truck. So it tends to be pretty comfortable for, you know, even casual cyclists. And I think a truck will come through and it won't, there we go. There's the, and that's, now you'll see the truck apron, his left wheels will just catch the apron. Slight rise and back down. There's a motorcyclist and it kind of loops its back again. So the PIOH is going to be set up with this kind of information. We'll have it kind of arranged in stations. I think we talked about arranging it kind of areas around the room so you can visit the map with the trucks and you can watch a bit of video. You can see the overall layout of the bypass. And there'll be people positioned, you know, at each station to answer questions. The public come in and view the information and try and figure out how to drive. On this, the second roundabout here on the, with Rockmart Road, Industrial Boulevard. This one has a little extra capacity because of the heavier turning movements. It has two lanes eastbound and then there's a full bypass from two directions. You know, when we looked at the forecasts of the traffic, we came to the conclusion we needed to promote bypasses. And that again gets.
Did you say eastbound?
This direction here. So eastbound.
That's Goldust right down the road there.
Okay, so if you went up and came toward us, that's the eastbound there on Rockmart, coming toward the dais, right? Okay.
This is going to be the elevation bypass. So this is where the three lanes.
I can't wait.
Okay. A couple of things. Eastbound doesn't really have a whole lot of traffic coming into Villarica, but there's 18 or 19 subdivisions out 101 Rockmart Road that creates a problem, a lot of traffic. You know, there's 15,000 people in Villarica, but going through both of these roundabouts, I think pretty much the people of Villarica are going to catch on fairly quick. They caught on to the backward parking fairly quick. So they're going to catch on pretty quick here. My concern will be those folks that we don't have the ability to get information to, that live outside the city of Villarica, whether it's the newspaper, radio, whatever. I don't know, but I know that there's a lot of subdivisions out 101 and a lot of commuting traffic from Villarica to New Georgia, always south of Dallas on 61. That may be a thought, something that you may have to think about, how to get the information to those folks, rather than just pulling up on top of it and seeing what somebody else does. We'll get a lot of phone calls, there's no doubt, but the phone calls will be from the people that are around here and those folks have no idea who to call or where to go to. So this is something to think about, I guess.
Are you talking about still people within Carroll County, though?
No, not necessarily.
Okay. Because I was thinking about they're still welcome to come to that.
Oh, certainly. I mean, anybody.
You know, advertise as much as possible in the paper, the radio. I got some of my experience with these just because I was driving through other counties that had them.
Right.
You know, I remember when they started bringing them into South Florida, even in neighborhood, in certain neighborhood areas because of the flow of traffic. neighborhood, in certain neighborhood areas because of the flow of traffic.
Yeah, as you... You know, the department puts more of these out. I think more of the public will have experience.
There'll be a large DOT-type sign, usually white with black letters, posted at, I guess...
For the meeting?
Yes, for the meeting.
Yes, there will be.
So those people...
Several of those around town, so people who drive these roads will see those and have an opportunity to attend the meeting.
And the meeting is gonna be, I don't think we said a location.
It said Powell Park.
Powell Park.
Yes.
Is there a time set? I haven't seen a time either.
Yeah, September...
I believe the signs are already out. Aren't the signs already out?
Has the district already put the signs out? If they're not out yet, they will be... They're out? Okay, so...
Let me say, I appreciate you bringing these videos in. I've been through a number of roundabouts. I like them. I think they work good. This just gives us a different perspective on it. I do wanna chime in on the mayor's comments, though, about the bike path. I didn't have the pleasure of doing the bicycle-friendly cities, but I had entrepreneurial-friendly cities at the same time, and this is actually a part of that. So I would like to see it in the plans, if that's possible. I'd like y'all to take a look at it. Whether or not we do it now, I'd like to see if we're able to incorporate those.
Yeah. One thing to keep in mind on the bypass, however, is it is a 50 mile an hour road, is what's proposed. So there can be concerns with putting bike facilities on a high-speed road like that.
Well, the bypass is, but if you're coming in off of Rockmart...
Right, and the state routes adjacent to it are lower speed, I believe, so there are some opportunities there as well.
'Cause you may not be actually traveling the bypass, you may just be circling past it.
Yeah, I'm gonna jump ahead. I know we're talking about the bypass now, and the speed is a problem, but if we have a dedicated lane that has a gore area between the drive lanes and the bike lane, that is permissible on a road of 50 miles an hour, correct?
There's... There are treatments you can do on a number of different things to put bike facilities on or adjacent to.
Again, I'm kind of looking forward in the crystal ball here, but, you know, and we're gonna talk about another item that affects this, but, you know, what better way for us to start our bike lane green belt in Villa Rica than incorporating the entire northern loop of Villa Rica, basically encompassing everything with a bike lane? And the beauty of that is, we have a trailhead that we just dedicated, had the ribbon cutting last week, that intersects that north bypass.
Right.
So if there is a way, without doing back studies and all the other things we've had to do, to incorporate that into the design, I would love to see that.
Also, before we have the meeting on the 20th, could you get us a little police car in there? I saw the fire truck and the ambulance and the bus. I can get you a Hot Wheel police car if I need to.
I think we can do that.
Okay.
Thank you. Police cars will be sitting up on the side, though, right?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
You don't like to be let out of anything.
I do still.
The attendant disappeared. We bring these things to meetings and they somehow disappear.
Any other questions?
Okay. I have one, but just not really pertaining to this. Last time we saw you, I believe I asked you to look into the reasoning why we were having two intersections on the road. I believe the first concept that DOT brought to us was it was not gonna be but one intersection?
Yeah, I was not able to get my hands on any of those concepts. I believe you said you saw Coldeksax proposed at Harrell and McCurdy?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I wasn't able to find any information on that. All the concepts that we worked on have had intersections at those locations, so not quite sure.
We had them out that reached from that wall, that wall, in this room that showed them.
Really?
Yeah. And it showed them at City Hall for about a month before they had the big meeting. But we'll see if we can find those.
Okay. Thank you.
And again, that meeting is Thursday, September, I mean, July the 20th at 7:00 PM at Powell Park, and the public certainly needs to be there for that meeting, so...
I think it's 5 to 7.
Yes, 5 to 7.
5 to 7?
Yes, and it is an open house-style format.
It's informal, like if you get off work and you get there at 6:30, you're good. You don't have to show up at 5:00.
Absolutely.
Just anytime you can drop by.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Item 2, Fullville Trail.
This is actually piggybacking on something that you just mentioned. As most of you know, we did a ribbon cutting for the Fullville Trailhead last week. And as we look to implement what will essentially be a trail system, there's a segment of the Fullville Trail that, from the trailhead, it will actually intersect with the north loop. So part of the conversation today is, from my conversations with GDOT, what we really wanna do is begin to give them just a little bit more direction on how that trail segment will actually intersect here. There are a couple of different options, and certainly we've been talking back and forth. I certainly heard some initial ideas about potentially looking at ways that there may be a pedestrian underpass that could go under the north loop. And in order to be able to explore an option like that, we wanted to make sure that we come out and really begin to educate you on what all the options may be, so that ultimately there are some decisions that GDOT and the consultants will need to know really by the fall if we're gonna move in that direction. And so based on our conversations, as it relates to the speed limit of that road, there were three options that were really talked about. That was one, if there was a potential to, one, do a pedestrian underpass, potentially a pedestrian overpass, or if the third option would really be to just look at exploring and running parallel with the road. So I wanted to have the consultant come up and initially just kind of talk to you about what's one cost estimation, if you would, for the city council to really begin to explore. But just to begin to, so that everyone understands, if I can orient for most of y'all that we're on the same page here, there's a segment, I don't know if you can see really well, where the trail system, or excuse me, what would be essentially a rails-to-trails project, you can see the segment of the rail spur, which is a very... You just kind of zoomed in. A very narrow triangular shape. That is the, basically, the rail spur that, where the trailhead connects in and where it would essentially run across the line. Can everyone?
I'm not sure where we're looking.
If she can... I don't...
Or a laser pen or something?
Yeah, I didn't actually bring the laser pen, but if you can just...
That's the old rail bed.
And so you can see, if you zone back out, essentially, it basically runs a straight line, if you will, to where the north loop is going to be. So for us, like I said, it's how are we gonna explore intersecting with the north loop bypass? So based upon our discussions, there were a couple of things, like I said, that were some concerns, if pedestrians actually cross that road, how to get them across safely. And based on our conversations, maybe you can just fill in a little bit more on what our three options happen to be, and how we need to provide some information or direction to them on one of those options in particular, if we decide to explore it. And we need to do that fairly quickly.
Yes, so like Vicki said, the three options that we've very briefly looked at for this crossing is what we've got shown here at the far right of the screen. There is a underpass. And you'll see this fairly often where it looks like a concrete culvert under the road, probably 10 by 10 feet spanning the road. Another option would be a pedestrian bridge over the underpass, and the city could design that as utilitarian or as elaborate as you see fit. And then another option would be just bring the trail parallel to the bypass and cross, most likely at one of the roundabouts. The roundabout shown here is the one at Industrial Boulevard and Rockmart Road. So I'm not sure of the timeframe on the construction of the trail y'all are working on, but that'd be...
It's a little bit...
Yeah, so it'd be further out. So we need to... We could make provisions in the design of the bypass to accommodate whatever treatment.
The one that's shown on this piece of paper, is that a gully in that area? Is that a loose part?
Yeah, so the blue line, parallel by two red lines, is a stream. So the, just to the left of that would be an appropriate location for a underpass.
The underpass is sort of like what's in Bremen now, where you go. Are you familiar with that?
I'm not familiar with that, but you...
I'm not as familiar in that.
In Bremen, where you go under.
Yeah, but yes, what it would look like is the trail would go about 10 feet below the grade of the road itself, and there'd be a concrete tunnel almost underneath the...
You in the green belt down in Carrollton over by Noonan Road? You been down there?
Yes, absolutely.
And the Silver Comet has to go through several tunnels.
Yes, I believe you're right, yeah.
One of them's really extensive, but I'm sure that's not what we...
Yes, this one would be somewhere in the order of magnitude of 100 feet long.
I'm guessing that some of what would make up our mind would be when the dollar figures come out on what it would cost to go under, over...
Yes, so...
Parallel and cross.
Um, very...
What's expensive's gonna be, go parallel and cross at the roundabout, but...
We haven't studied that, but I know certainly that would be the lowest cost option.
But it doesn't follow the path of the old sulfur mine trail, which is, you know, the original intent here, so have you all run any numbers as far... I know just in my experience, overhead's obviously gonna be more expensive than under them.
Yes, very back-to-the-mapkin, high-level cost estimates for the underpass would be about $350,000.
For an underpass?
Yes.
How about for an overpass?
Um, almost certainly more than that, and depending on how elaborate or, you know, decorative.
Could easily be close to a million dollars.
It could be, yes.
Are you familiar going up 61 to Dallas, Georgia? As you enter the city limits of Dallas, there is a Silver Comet Trail.
Right.
And what they've done is there's, they've simply built a bridge on the road and dug out for the Silver Comet Trail under it. And it's wide, it has nothing to do with 10 by 10 or whatever. This is probably 100 foot wide, but the bridge, well, it's not quite 100 foot wide, it's probably 50 foot wide, but the bridge is just a bridge like it would be over a stream. Maybe a thought to look into the process of how much that would cost?
Yeah, we could put some numbers to it, several different options and...
Is that them building the bridge so that then it didn't cost us anything?
Well...
I was just trying, I was trying to visualize what you were talking about, the roads going over.
Yeah.
Are you talking about right by the school, just past the Quick Trip?
See, if you do that, then it won't cost us anything.
Right? You just build the road up and we'll go on.
Four lane, you know, going over?
So certainly, the underpass, one of the reasons why we brought that option is because, of course, that's something that they would need to be incorporating into the design now. And anything, any of the other options that we explore could be done totally separate and apart from what is actually happening right now. From the conversation that we had with them, I believe we mentioned October would probably be like the latest, that if, in fact, we want to explore the option of continuing to do pedestrian underpass, that we would really need to provide really all final direction, and if that's going to be the go-ahead, to let them know by then, it'll give us time to actually, even to continue to explore even some of the other things that we have to address, that the city will be responsible for addressing as it relates to this project as well. But I at least wanted to make sure that we're bringing the information to you far enough in advance, just to at least be able to make sure that you have a better understanding of what that segment will basically include. Because at some point, even though we may not build the trail just yet, we may need to program that later, it will certainly already be accounted for of how we're going to cross the road, if in fact that is the direction that we end up going as it relates to what will be the trail system. So again, it's just a lot to consider, and that we need to address more so on the front end than what we may have or what you may have initially thought or planned for. But I wanted to make sure that we at least get the information out now. We need to give them the answer by October.
So would it be the desire of the council for staff to pull together some preliminary numbers on three options? Number one being an underpass, number two being an overpass, number three being basically a bridge for the road? Is that the direction?
Well, if I can throw something out to that, you know, a pedestrian, if you were to do a bridge, it would really come down to how elaborate so that it would be. And so sometimes, that's a lot of design considerations that, you know, you really want us to look at and explore. I mean, I think we can do some, have some preliminary conversation, but again, how elaborate you want the design to be, we won't necessarily maybe have all of that information or wouldn't have gone through the whole round of consideration of what that's gonna look like.
I think it would surprise me if the other two were not three times as much as the underpass.
Precisely.
But I think that would help, it would help me anyway.
Okay.
Yeah, we can at least develop order of magnitude for that kind of cost.
And the other thing that might, I know would be helpful to me, maybe the others, if we're sitting down sometime at a work session or whatever, and we actually look at what we think might be the proposed path. I haven't seen some of those old drawings, or if I have, it's been a long time.
There is historical data out there. Vicki, I'll get with you on that, because there was a map at one time in City Hall. I've walked all that entire course, and the reason I was so dead-set against running parallel over the road is the rail bed is still in place. In fact, the rail's in place for a large portion of that, so it'd be a shame to, you know, not use that. But I'll get with you and we'll try to find those historical maps, because it clearly shows where that rail line goes through.
I do have the kind of rough conceptual layout of the trail system, if you will. You know, I can certainly bring that. I don't have it in a form that it can be easily reproduced, if you will, but I'm certainly, I'll make sure to bring that to, you know, an upcoming meeting. And again, the only other consideration that we talked about, we can, again, make sure we, everyone understands the, any constraints as it relates to the speed of the road and certainly bring the concepts, the three options.
We actually do have a layout showing the green path all the way around Villa Rica.
Well, there was a conceptual drawing that was done. I don't think it's actually gone out to the public to look at and to have conversations about, so that's, would really be like the next steps in terms of really coming up and finalizing a master trail plan for the city. But certainly, this segment here, the city owns the land that's from the trailhead approaching the north loop bypass, so we don't have to have a lot of conversation on that particular segment, which is why this is the appropriate time to have the conversation for that part.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you all. Appreciate that, very informative. Tab B, governing body. Ms. Sarah Hefti, I believe she just came in. No time to even sit down.
The first item is considering the termination of the Temple, the intergovernmental agreement with the City of Temple for financial and code enforcement services. What do y'all want?
Mr. Mayor and Council, this is kind of at the request of myself and Ms. Hefti, in that we feel like we've done all we can do there. We've got them online, like was requested, with the new software. We feel like they can move forward on their own now. Sarah's been working a lot of extra hours, a lot of nights till 1:00 in the morning, trying to stay caught up with everything, with their work and our work, so we were asking that you guys consider voting to terminate the agreement, give them the notice, so she can come back to us full-time.
I thought we discussed this already and had already agreed to come up with a termination agreement.
You've talked about it, but you have not acted...
Have not voted on it.
David, have you looked at this agreement? What are the terms? The agreement I have is not filled in.
The agreement with Temple allows us to terminate it, I believe, with 30 days' notice.
Okay, and what, would that be all of the services that we are currently...
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Describe all of the services, I think there's a...
The other services is they have one code enforcement person that serves most of the time there in Temple. He would come back to our offices and work our stuff, but also, we would be sending one of our code enforcement people to training to where they can do construction sites, and we are also trying to move forward in putting a code enforcement person, that same person possibly doing building inspections to assist, to save some money that we spend using the county. It would, you know, obviously at first, it would be just getting started doing it to try to get into that realm.
And let me say this too, I spoke to Mayor Harmon, told him that we were going to be talking about this, and, you know, this is not done in retaliation against anyone in the City of Temple. We have a good working relationship with Temple, and we would hope that would continue to be the case. This is driven by the fact that we feel like we need to listen to our employee, and Sarah's certainly a benefit to everybody here in Villarica, but there's no ill feelings between this council and the council or mayor in Temple's order, and Mr. Harmon knew that. I did speak to a couple of the council down at GMA convention, and of course, there's some, I mean, they're a little bit upset in the fact that they were canceling the contract, and they're going to have to go out and find someone, but I think the, if I'm not mistaken, what we had said was it would be a two-month period, is that correct?
Copy of the contract I had had two months, 60 days.
Copy I have says 60 days as well.
That may be right.
And in fairness to Mr. Ogden, the city manager, he did send a message to me yesterday at City Hall, and I did not get a chance to call him back today.
Mr. Manchin, what do we have to do to terminate? Do we just take a vote, or do we have to have a document in front of us to vote on, or what?
You would just need to vote to terminate the agreement and authorize the city manager to notify the City of the Temple that we weren't canceling it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to that effect.
Before you make your motion, can I just make a statement?
Sure.
I've also had some interaction with the council members there, and a little bit with the mayor, and they're begging us for additional time, but, and I told them I wasn't, you know, against additional time, but my concern was what is it doing to our financial department? Were they overburdened? And that's what would help me make my decision. I haven't, I'm getting the idea that that's what's going on, that y'all are overburdened. I'm trying not to...
Let me, and I appreciate that, but one of the meetings I attended at GMA conference is how to run a smooth meeting. And so, before we do discussion on that, if we get a second, then we would certainly take discussion on that. So, I have a motion on the floor to terminate the agreement with Temple. 60 days, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, discussion?
I think we have gone through this already. This is not the first time this has come up, and it's, for the last couple of months it's come up, that our financial staff is, is a burden to our city and our financial staff. That's why it keeps coming up.
And that's my question, is that exactly what's going on, city manager?
Yes, ma'am, that's it. I mean, it's just, it's not fair of her to run as hard as she does, and she's not the only one going up there, and they've had audits that she's been a part of, and they run her pretty hard.
And we've done our part.
And to trying to train everybody over there, right, on the, on whatever system they're using, okay.
And we do have 60 days to make sure that they feel better about what they're doing. They have been operating by themselves for this month, and, you know, we just wrapped up their audit, so it's kind of in a good place. Plus, if I'm going to do something, I want to do it well, and there's so much more we need to be doing for Villarica, I just can't focus on it.
Yeah.
Okay, have a motion, a... I'm sorry.
Let me just say, I also spoke with council members at GMA, and I don't want to say anything negative, I just want to say that I based my decision on this, on my discussions with you and what I know from the city manager, and I think it's time to part ways, and I think 60 days, to your point about asking for a little more time, that's a lot of time. So, I'm in favor of that.
They'll know that it's time for them to take it over, so they'll have to take it over.
Okay, I have a motion, a proper second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next is our 2016 audit, we just wrapped up. James Benz from Malden &amp; Jenkins is here to present, so I'll let him come on up.
We expect that he's thoroughly knowledgeable on roundabouts, having to sit through all that first, right? There's nothing like vacation reading.
Lot of material to get. Some good reading, real good reading. Well, good evening, mayor and council, my name is James Benz. I'm one of the partners with Malden &amp; Jenkins, and I was the partner in charge of your city's audit this year. You do have two documents before you. The thicker, heavier one is your annual financial report, which is the city's prepared document, which we come in and we do the audit on. And then, the other smaller documents is our discussion and analysis. This is kind of something we just put together on our end to help provide communication to you all. I'm not going to read it, but that is the document I'm going to go through as our primary source for this evening. If at any point in here, there's something in there that you want to talk about and stop me, feel free to just jump in and grab my attention. Otherwise, I'm just going to kind of guide you through the book, and we'll hit a few high spots and kind of go over the results real quick. So, in the smaller document, the ADA, as we call it, on page two, just as a little bit of background, I know a lot of you, you see me once a year, we come in and do our presentation, but this just gives you some more information about our firm. We are a small, well, I guess we're a medium-sized regional firm. One of the things we specialize in is in general audits, but then especially governmental audits. About 25 to 27% of our firm is nothing but governmental audits, so we audit about 300 different governments throughout the southeast, providing about 70,000 hours a year in audit services. The majority of those are here in Georgia, and you can see the kind of the makeup of what our client base is, about 85 cities and over 40 counties in the southeast. At the bottom, on all of our engagements, we have two partners at a minimum involved in the audit. We have the audit service partner who's involved directly with the client, and then we have an independent quality control auditor who comes in to make sure from a technical standpoint that we've addressed everything. So, we have, we always have two sets of eyes looking at all of our reports. Page three just gives you a little bit of other information about services our firm does offer. Again, the government practice is about 25% of what we do, so this is kind of a snapshot of the other 75% of who we are. On page four, kind of the real interest of what you have in the presentation, you know, the financial statements that you have before you, those are management's responsibility. It's a responsibility of the city to prepare that information, and as the independent external auditors, it's our responsibility to audit that information in order to provide an opinion on whether or not it's materially presented. We've done our audit, you know, an audit is not 100% testing, we do sampling, and we do use materiality in our decision-making, and we were able to issue an unmodified opinion this year, which is the same opinion you received last year, and that says that the financial statements are materially correct as they're presented by the city. That's the thumbs up, everything's good opinion. Flipping to page six, six and seven give you a little bit of information on the performance of your general fund, which is your main operating fund for the city. This just kind of gives you a breakdown of where your revenues came from this year, and you can see, looking at the pie charts, your property taxes and your sales tax, which is traditional for most Georgia cities, are your primary sources of income, coming in at 3.4 million and 2.3 million for this year. On the next page, on page seven, if you want to kind of see how your annual expenditures were broken out this year for your general fund, you can see, again, your primary services that the general fund provides is your public safety function, which is about 3.8 million of your annual expenditures, and then your general, your culture and recreation and your general government function, which is your operating branch. On page eight, this just gives you a full-year trend of sort of your performance of the general fund. You can see on the first chart, this is just showing you how your revenues and your expenditures over the past couple of years have trended, and you can see they've kind of stuck pretty close together, so obviously, you're not over-expending your resources during the On page nine, everyone always wants to ask, how do we do? How do we look compared to others? And so, this is a chart where we kind of give you a full-year trend again of where your fund balance is in comparison to your expenditures. Obviously, you can't necessarily compare fund balance to fund balance for governments of different sizes, but you can compare kind of the makeup of what your fund balance to your expenditure ratio is. And so, a lot of the rating agencies and GFOA, which is a national financial oversight committee, one of the things they like to do is they like to gauge and see, do you have about two to three months of reserves in your fund balance? You all have about 210 days, when they're looking for somewhere in the 80 to 90-day range, and so you can see, over the past couple of years, your fund balance down at the bottom, you guys have stayed well over the 25 to 30% mark that they're recommending, you know, entities stay at. So, that gives you the ability to make decisions and take actions and do things when necessary. On page 10, you know, outside of your general fund, one of your other large funds you all have is in your enterprise funds, and that's your water and sewer fund. And so, this, we're just going to talk about the cash flows for a minute, obviously, when you're looking at an enterprise fund, you have a little bit different way of evaluating things, because you have capital assets in that fund. And so, you can see that the operating cash flows for the year were about 1.9 million. With those cash flows, that allows you, from operations, that allows you to make your debt service payments on the housing, or the facility authority bonds, as well as to make capital outlay projects of about 300,000 during the year. And so, you're reinvesting those cash flow dollars back into your system. Kind of skipping over to page 14, one of the things we kind of want to take a moment and do make mention of, especially given the conversations that's just happened, you know, we want to thank Sarah and her team for the audit. Anyone who's gone through an audit, it's always a fun process. We send you a big list of all the things we need to do the audit, and then we come out on site, and we always end up asking for more, because as we test the things you've provided originally, we have more questions and more requests. So, even with her being stretched out, you know, she did a great job of getting us information and allowing us to do our job, come in and get out, and be able to get things wrapped up, so we do appreciate that. Through the audit process, there were a few audit adjustments that have been posted. Those have been discussed with management, they're posted to your system in your general ledger, as well as reflected in these financial statements. They're also in the back of this document, if you want to go over them and look at them, but again, they've been discussed with management and agreed to and posted on your system. As a result of the audit, we did have a couple of comments that, one, dealing with a segregation of duties issue, which for a city of your size is always a little bit of a risk when you have a smaller department, just that there are certain processes where making sure you have two competent set of eyes overlooking everything is always a best practice to implement. And so, these have kind of been, we've gone over these with management, and I know there's been plans put in place and action plans taken. And then there's a...
Are you saying that we have, you've recommended that and that we're doing that?
We've made recommendations, you know, obviously, we're just now kind of wrapping things up, so I don't know that I could say you're doing them now, but I think there's actions, plans in place to how to address them. You know, we have segregation of duties comments, concerns. One of the things that's always up to the governing body to evaluate is where you stand with the cost benefit of addressing those, because there may be items that you feel you have other compensating controls in place, and maybe you can't necessarily properly segregate and hire enough staff to cover the concern, but you can implement other compensating controls that'll help minimize the risk without going out and hiring two new people. And so, we're not directly requesting or suggesting more employees be hired, but more just other actions that can be taken to address those scenarios. And then, at the back of the document, starting on page 20, as we like to joke, this is where we kind of just, we provide you all the information, but if you ever have a hard time sleeping at night, this is the new upcoming accounting standards that are going to be applicable over the next couple of years. Obviously, all the decisions you all make, the accounting standards have, your decisions will have an effect on how the city carries out these standards. One of the things we try to do is, we do try to work with the city's management throughout the year, so that at year-end, there's no surprises, there's no unclear approach on how to implement these standards. So, we, you know, we offer training classes to both governance and members of management on upcoming standards, and then we also just come out interim periods during the year to make sure anything that's directly applicable to you all, that you're aware of it before it really hits. With that, that's the end of the presentation I have. If you all have any questions, I'd be happy to address them, and if you have anything at a latter point in time, we're always available. Email or phone call, or we can come back if need be.
Ladies and gentlemen?
My mic's off.
Well, just flipping through it, it seems like every page I look at, you're excited to have done this audit, and everything looks really good, so, but this is all, I've only had this few minutes to look at it, so maybe I don't have any questions right now. Do you all intend to come back and present to us again?
We're certainly available if you all want, if you go through everything and have some more questions, we can certainly come back and address any concerns you do have.
I guess one comment, looking through this, if you turn to page eight, I mean, that's something I think we all need to look at as elected officials up here, is the trend in government typically is, as the income goes up, so does the budget, and you know, that graph pretty much shows that. And I just think we need to be very aware that we're dealing with taxpayer money here, and we need to look at that every year like we do, not casting any spurs or saying anybody's doing anything wrong, but I think we need to always look at that. And it does concern me that our fund balance has dropped significantly. In 2016, it dropped by $308,000. Now, I know some of that was accounting, and Sarah, you may want to speak to that.
Sure. At the end of the year, the council voted to give 192,000 to the state patrol, so that was part of it. We also had other items during the year, like I think Butterballs, that wasn't budgeted, so we bought that out of fund balance, so we, and those are investments that needed to happen, but they came out of fund balance, so that was part of that.
Will this be available in the charts, especially on our website for...
Yes.
Okay. Further questions?
Yeah, I guess one big question I have, the presentation of the December 31st, 2016 financial report, and this is beginning of July in 2017, why did it take so long?
They're due to state six months after year-end. Traditionally, it takes most governments somewhere between two to three months to go through the closeout process. Just, you've got to make sure to account for all your transactions, and you get a lot of invoices that come through late in the process, especially when you deal with construction. And so, the normal closeout process is somewhere between two to three months, depending on your size and your staffing, and then the state gives, the state of Georgia gives you six months from year-end to get the reports in.
You know, we've been doing this 24 years, and I think this is the longest it's ever taken, and I think the shortest has been somewhere around April 1st. And those folks were down just south of here, in Carrollton, but they did a pretty good job there. I just wondered why it did take so long, so you answered that, thank you.
You know, we started the audit the end of April, so it's a pretty quick turnaround for an entity of your size. It's just a matter of scheduling and when things start, and we can always evaluate that based on what you all and management want to do.
I was thinking, a lot of times when you give our financial reports, you'll say, but this has to be credited back to the prior year... but this has to be credited back to the prior year, and we're already in the new year, but there's still things coming in or getting paid for, or money coming in, so I imagine that's why we get delayed for those several months. Okay?
Listen. Other questions?
I might have questions once I read it all, but-
Sure.
Usually the thing I'm most concerned about, or I shouldn't say concerned, that I look for, is what are your recommendations that we need to tighten up, or this isn't quite right, or you should have another set of eyes? And then I look to you and just, are we doing that? And just some feedback on how we're doing the recommendations, and that's pretty much my biggest concern.
Yeah, a lot of his, what page was it on?
Oh, that's probably like-
One of the big items that we talked about was our IT controls. After y'all look through more of this, we can talk about that. But basically, our IT group should be able to document, you know, how they're handling risk and how they're covering for those controls. That's not something we've done yet, but that's something we need to pursue, making sure that people are taken out of the system as soon as they terminate. We have talked to HR, and we have implemented a termination sheet, so now she passes it around. So finance sees it, and I know to take so-and-so out of Cassell, Louise knows to take away their, or shut off their fuel card and those kinds of things, so that's a control that you have in place.
What page are you looking at?
That was page 18. That discusses all the IT items that need to be, the IT controls that need to be addressed. Some of the other ones, dealing with segregation of duties, you know, in the past, there haven't necessarily been two knowledgeable people with accounting experience that, so if you, you know, I could hand this to someone, but if they aren't knowledgeable, they don't know what they're looking at, there's no point. So Louise and I have met, I do have a knowledgeable person in my department that can, we can look at each other's journal entries and kind of cross-reference there, so we're going to set up a new form that we can pass to each other and sign off. So different things like that we are talking about, and like I said, hope to now have more time in the future to be looking at those things, so.
I would like to echo what the gentleman said about Sarah and her team and the awesome job they did.
Absolutely.
I don't know that we all appreciate what all goes into this and the hours that she spent, and she did this for Temple and for Villarica within a three to six-month period, and that's awesome, and I appreciate her very much.
Thank you, Sarah.
David, we've just received this. Is there a vote necessary at some point on this, or is this?
I think it'd be appropriate for the city to approve the budget presentation, but I don't know that you have to do it tonight, since you just received it tonight.
Yeah, I don't think we're ready, but, so we will place this on the August agenda, or July, or?
I think August would be better.
Yeah, July's next Tuesday, so.
There's a lot going on.
Well, it's Tuesday week.
Does that affect the city being, you know?
Yeah.
In order to stay in compliance with CDBG, we actually had some earlier dates, so I sent in a lot of stuff today and some yesterday.
Thank you, Sarah.
So August will be fine?
Yeah. It's not required, so.
Are you wanting?
You don't have, there's no requirement for formal action.
Yeah, it's just something that you would want to put in the minutes. It's not something that, you know, is legally binding on you, but I think it's a good reflection in the minutes to show that you've seen it and read it and approved it.
Maybe we could let you know, Alyssa, if we would like to ask them back if we have questions before we do that.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to tab C, executive session. David?
Yes, the proposal is for the council to go into executive session for the purpose of meeting, to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring of a public officer or employee as provided in Georgia Code Section 50-14-3B2, specifically to discuss the hiring of a city manager for the city.
Do I hear a motion to that end? So we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor? We are in executive session.
Y'all stick around.